...and how we're going to roll this out. Thank you.
Okay, so I think everybody, I hope you know why we're here today. There's a proposed interlocal agreement between our city and the Broward MPO. So the reason why we're here today, we're not here because we're overly emotional. We're not here because we're paid to be here. We're not here because we're negative. We are here because we like transparency. We like to ask questions and we like to get solid answers. So we only have 60 minutes to accomplish that, which is why I want to thank you all for giving me three pages worth of questions in advance. On the screens, you'll see the 13 questions that I consolidated it down to. Ben Rogers has that and he's shared that with everybody else. So I'm going to turn it over to them. They're going to do their presentation. I have the list of questions that I'm going to try to keep track and make sure if there's anything missing at the end that I ask. I have the questions that you guys have submitted in writing. We are not going to be interjecting and interrupting because we won't get through this. So if you have a question, Allison over here from Tarpon River has the cards. Give them to me at the end. Then at the end, if we have a couple of minutes, I know some of you just like, it's just so close to your heart that you can't put it in writing, then you can stand up and you can yell and scream and sweat and spit on us. If there's time at the end.
And just, you know, please review the questions.
Yeah, just make sure you realize the questions are here. There were only a couple extra. They're here. So don't ask a question that's already up here, please, please, please. Just for record-keeping, we're going to do a quick roll call of the associations that are in attendance. Even if you're not a representative, if your association is called, just say here. Lynn, what do you need? Well, you're doing this.
Oh, I'm there.
Are you fanning yourself? Okay. All right. Marilyn, roll call, please.
Quick, quick. And a lot of people are downstairs at the planning and zoning.
Marilyn, roll call, please.
Roll call. Vol Harbor, Bermuda Riviera, Beverly Heights.
Here.
Birch Park, Central Beach Alliance, Central City Alliance. Coley Hammack.
Here.
Thank you. Coral Ridge Country Club, Coral Ridge Association.
Here.
Coral Ridge Association, thank you. Coral Ridge Isles, Hassan Park, Downtown Fort Lauderdale, Edgewood, Flagler Village, Gold Ocean Mile, Harbordale Civic, yes. Harbor Beach, Harbor Inlet, Historic Dorsey River Bend, Home Beautiful, Idyllwild, Improvement. I know you're here, Betty.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Imperial Point. Imperial Point.
I didn't hear you call it.
Okay. Lake Ridge, Landings.
Here.
Landings is here. Lauderdale Beach.
Here.
Thank you. Lauderdale Harbors.
Here.
Lauderdale Isle Civic.
Here.
Lauderdale Manor, HOA.
Here.
Okay, Melrose Manor.
Here.
Middle River Terrace.
Yes.
Nummi Isles, Ponciera Park.
Nummi Isles.
Nummi Isles, okay. Oh, okay. Nummi Isles. Ponciera Heights, Ponciera Park, Progresso, Rio Vista.
Present.
River Gardens, Sweeting Estates, Riverland Preservation Society.
Here.
River Oaks Civic, Riverside Park, Rock Island Community Center.
Community.
Rock Island, yes, yes, yes. Sailboat Bend, Seven Isles Civic Association, Shady Banks, Sunrise into Coastal, South Middle River, Tarpon River.
Here.
And Victoria Park.
Here.
Thank you.
That harbor issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, which one of you gentlemen wants to get us started?
I guess I'll get started. I don't know, he just handed me stuff with a smiley face and a frowny face on it, so I'm sort of intrigued as to what was on the frowny face. But my eyes are so bad, I couldn't, I couldn't focus in fast enough. So maybe Greg will share that with us later. I'm not going to get into a bunch of small talk. Afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming and allowing us to stay focused on this one topic. It's been a topic that has sort of presented itself through our budget process as one of question. I am going to start right off the bat, though, and say, I think a lot of the questions that have come over the course of these last couple of months are the manner in which this was rolled out through the budget process. I want to touch on that because I think it's important. Greg Stewart, who just showed up, he got stuck in traffic because of the rain and the traffic jam outside. He and I fully intended on presenting this interlocal agreement to both our board as well as his board in July to coincide with the budget delivery to the commission, the budget message. The chart is very specific. It says that I have to deliver a budget message to the commission in July in advance of their September public hearings. And I had to do that. We were prepared to go forward with an ILA to at least start the discussion amongst his board and my board in July. And going in front of the city commission would have been easy. More difficult to go in front of the MPO board because both the executive director and our mayor, who is a board member, were both out of the country during the July meeting. And I did make the decision that it was important enough of a topic to have our board members there as well as the executive director when it was presented to the MPO. And that's why it did not go not to the MPO in July and the budget message did. And now all of a sudden, it looks like we're playing catch-up with what the heck is this? And a lot of that was because of the timing of just how everything transpired with public meetings and then their summer breaks. And both bodies took a summer break after that July meeting. Okay, that's out of the way. I think a lot of that described how we ended up with what appeared to be a mixed message, being a budget document that was out as well as this notion of an interlocal agreement being discussed about. Let me give you a little bit of the history. Greg and I and our transportation and mobility folks started talking, our director here, Ben, started talking early, early, early this year, well into the early spring, maybe even late winter, about what it would look like if the largest city in Broward County and the county's planning organization found a way to partner to enhance transportation planning on a regional basis. We sat at that diner up at 62 and Andrews, I think it was, when we had that lunch meeting and talked about how some, we could gain some efficiencies maybe between the organizations, how we could recognize that we're a city that has a hole in the middle of us. We've got Oakland Park, we have the manors. How we could, how we could position our projects such that they met the criteria of the MPO when it came towards looking to funding so that when funding became available, we could be first in line with sort of our hand up. And we crafted this notion of this concept that we could form an interlocal agreement and partner with the MPO and have them do some of our regional planning for us. It amounts to Greg having a planner that deals with each commission district individually. It has other things in it that, I think there's like one other person beyond the four, I forget what they call it. But it is to focus specifically a partnership on that more regionalized macro, it's now becoming termed macro-level planning as it relates to transportation. I had a visual I wanted to pass out today that sort of showed how the department, at least I think it will line up if in fact this interlocal agreement goes forward. And of course, like any good plan, it changed at lunch. And when it changed at lunch, if you happened to be in attendance at the last commission meeting, it was very obvious that when I come up with a graphic, if I don't deliver it to the commission first before I deliver it to anybody else, that won't go over well. So that's why I'm not here with the graphic tonight. But I can tell you that we've been open-minded through this whole planning process. And even as recent as today, we added a couple more positions back to our city chart as people that would be city employees going, going forward. So we never did this as a money-saving idea. I mean, that came along with it. And of course, in a year when the commission was saying we need to eliminate $10 million from our general fund, any decision we could make that did have a financial savings was a positive one. But as we started this process and started putting together this interlocal agreement, we saw numbers as big as a potential savings of $700,000. As I'm standing here today because of positions that have been added back or other things, if we start to talk savings, we're really, at this point, talking half of that, or $350,000. So the plan is still changing, still morphing. Hopefully, what you'll learn about Chris, for as long as you allow me the privilege of sitting in the seat, is that I don't deliver something early on and then close my mind as to whether or not it should change along the way as we're providing input and feedback. So let's talk a little bit about what it is. And then I'm going to let Greg do some talking and Ben do some talking so you don't have to sit here and listen to Chris rattle on all afternoon. But the first question that we have up here is, what do we think the most important transportations are in the city at this point? And putting this ILA aside, we've got a lot of traffic, if you haven't noticed. And consistently over the last three years, as we've asked the public, what are you least satisfied with? And what we do as a local city, the number one thing, and number one thing by a big margin is cars don't move. And you're not doing anything to make that matter. You're taking lanes away and you're, you know, making it harder to pass through neighborhoods and you're making it more difficult to drive on 13th Street because you put in roundabouts and shrunk the, shrunk the lanes down. You know, we're hearing these, this feedback as you're going the wrong direction. If you haven't noticed, we've got lots of cars. And we had sort of been of the mindset that put a lot of cars on the street and sooner or later, it's going to get so difficult to drive that people are going to be forced out of their cars and onto bikes and on the sidewalks, walking. And the reality, at least the reality of the policy vision of this commission is it's hot here and it rains. And so, every day, this time of year. And so to think that we, you know, can abandon one at the benefit of the other, it's just not, not where we're going from a sort of policy vision at this point. I guess I'll bring that in now while I think it makes sense that we not only continue to look at those smaller transportation things that matter to Fort Lauderdale, but it as a more regional driver as well. So I think we've got a lot of cars. I think we're not moving them well. I think we've got some corridors that are not as safe as they could be and they just light up on a heat map when you look at where people, pedestrians and bicyclists are injured or killed. And so I really think that we need to focus on that, focus on traffic synchronization. It is, I sat out here for four minutes at a traffic light today with nothing passing in either direction. And that, in 2019, shouldn't be that way. Systems exist to move people around towns so well in other places and we just haven't gotten there yet. So, you know, those are some of the things that I think are things we need to address today. And I think, you know, a lot of that we, we handle individually, but we can also handle by getting a little, a little bit of depth with who we partner with. So I can answer number two as well. How will the proposed partnership make our city more efficient? Let me explain that example real quick because I too would look at that example and go, what the heck is that? Is that the most important thing they could be doing? Why is that not Public Works's issue? And it's not Public Works's issue because when you, it is Public Works's issue, but it's also transportation mobility. Why you see that number is if you look at the data and why we have people that are, when people are killed on our streets as bicyclists or pedestrians, it's when it's dark. And one of the challenges we gave our Vision Zero group was to get our streets back bright, to get them bright again because the common denominator, common theme among people that get hit is that they're just not seen. And so if you look at what, why they spent so much time trying to get street lights turned on, it was to try to brighten up the thoroughfare so that the people that are on bikes and walking can be seen. I don't know why tourists only pack black clothes. And they wear these black clothes when they're walking on A1A and we have turtle lights and so they just sort of blend in.
That's true.
And we need to like get the word out that there's other brighter clothes you can bring or put on a flashy light or do something. But I think we've become more efficient just because we have better depth. We're not going to lose the depth we have today. And in fact, you know, I think this is an enhancement rather than a replacement. You know, somehow this got, got told early on that this was a replacement instead of, instead of two governmental entities who are larger at a county level trying to do something jointly, rather than operating in silos, we can actually, we can actually have a partnership. Three benefits that the city can expect to see. So I don't think you're going to see any reduction, but I'll get to those questions in a minute. But I think you'll see us being a player on a more regional basis. There's 31 cities in Broward County. And we're the biggest. We're the biggest and we're the urban downtown. And when everybody gets up in the morning who stays in Broward County, they typically come towards our downtown. And when they go home, they go to the suburbs. When they're here all day, you know, we've got that density during the day. And between that being a tourist destination, you know, we have traffic. And I think as we start to see this penny surtax come to fruition and start to distribute around the county, I think that, you know, we position ourselves to be as attractive as each of the 30 other cities in competing for, for those funds. And I think having a partnership with the, with the group that's going to be the distributors is, certainly, we're not asking to get ahead and we're not trying to be first in line. But that partnership has some advantages in that we at least know our projects will be designed such that they will meet the standards to be funded. And I think that that's a, a real benefit. Things TAM did last year that will not be done if this moves forward. I don't anticipate anything. And again, I anticipate that we'll just have more opportunity to, to diversify what we, what we offer. I have said, and I'll say to this group as well, that this isn't about a pink slip game with a bunch of employees. If you thought that that was the case, we have talented staff. We have talented staff and 2,800-plus people in the organization, any given day, any given day, there's 120 to 150 of those positions that are vacant. And if we're talking at this point of a handful, I really mean a handful of people that on paper might look displaced, we will find vacant spots, we will create, either create or allocate them into a spot that would be vacant that would match their, their skillset. So this isn't about the talented folks that you've come to know and like and deliver on your behalf and advocate on your behalf. This isn't an attempt to, to move them out in advance of people we don't know who would be working at the MPO. How will we speed up the resident request process from, and get more, more get done? Remember that necessarily, this is a partnership of, of speed. You know, it, I certainly don't anticipate it to slow down, but I don't know that I necessarily can stand here either and say that we're going to become 10% more efficient in the form of speed because of the partnership. Let's see, will this result in our city obtaining less grants and how, if at all, does this affect the city ability to obtain grants from the MPO? I don't anticipate this will result in us receiving less grants. And I will let Greg Stewart speak for himself here in just a minute and let him speak to the, his belief of the city's ability to obtain grants from the MPO. A conflict of interest question. We're not asking for anything special and we're not, this is not a quid pro quo type partnership. This is a partnership for planning services. I don't, don't see that conflict or anticipate that conflict. And I'll let Greg address his position on that as well. So many positions being eliminated, how can residents be assured that neighborhood-specific knowledge current staff hasn't, has, doesn't get lost in the transition? Hope I've just answered that. The same people, when you pick up the phone, will either answer our phone, they'll answer the MPO's phone, they'll answer a phone that they're in in our public works department while they're building transportation projects. This is, this is a partnership for supply and services. Probably will insert some new people into the mix, but what you like today, which is to pick up the phone and call 954-828-blah, blah, 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 is not going to change. Will this affect current ongoing projects such as 17th Street Projects, Lauderdale Trail, Vision Zero, Los Angeles Mobility Working Group? Couple of those get affected only because we have lost one staff member, which we may have lost otherwise, who is the project liaison to two of those projects, I understand. He's taken a position with an outside consulting firm. So those will change to the extent that they'll have a different face attached to it from our shop. But I don't anticipate that to change the trajectory of the plan itself. How will neighborhoods who have a neighborhood mobility master plan at any level of implementation or master plans the improved service results in this proposed ILA? So I'm going to go off-script just for a second and I'll get back on-script. We have a lot of mobility plans out there without a lot of funding attached to do a lot of work that the mobility plans call for. And I think that's disingenuous, that we have led you up to believe that we're doing these plans and we have the ability to do all these things. And I look to where we are in our capital budget. And either the funding exists multiple years out or it doesn't exist yet. And there's always a disconnect between having a plan, needing the program for funding and everything in every budget that we build competes for the sixth year because we have a five-year capital plan. So if all of a sudden Dennis is in his neighborhood and we just finish a mobility master plan and it calls for chicanes and we go, gosh, we're going to need chicanes and speed humps and speed tables and a couple of raised intersections. And we say, okay, let's program Dennis's neighborhood for capital funding to be able to do those projects. When we build next year's budget, which is the 21 budget, it would be fighting for 27 funding unless we un-prioritize and defund something else, which I don't like to do because Dennis would fight a lot right now to get into 27's funding queue. And then he waits on it for those five years just to have it all of a sudden become unimportant in year four and say, you know, somebody else swooped in and decided that their project was more important. We do have neighborhoods that are waiting multiple years to get, and they build excitement to get towards that funding, to get capital projects done. For neighborhood leaders, for neighborhood leaders, will this change the process of getting assistance on transportation matters if this moves forward? Not at all. Not at all. And I want to emphasize that very, very strongly. Not, not at all. You'll, you'll have the same voices. If they choose to stay with us, you'll have the same voices that you have today. I have to anticipate the end of this next question. Can I make it whatever I want it to be?
Yes.
What is your response to residents who are concerned that since Broward MPO serves a greater number of people, Fort Lauderdale residents will see reduced customer service? I don't see that. The reason I don't see that is because our partnership with the MPO is focused on this more macro-level, regional transportation planning. We will still be retaining the neighborhood transportation planning. We will still be retaining the implementation of projects in Fort Lauderdale. But MPO doesn't have implementers. They can do plans all day long, but they, if they turn a plan over to us, we're still going to be the ones that are executing on the plan at the implementation phase. So I don't, you know, Greg runs a great shop and I'm, I'm sure that if you call him directly, you'll be treated very well and enjoy great customer service, but you're not going to lose the service that you have from us either. And so hopefully, by the time I go to the September 3rd commission meeting, I can, well, I say hopefully, I will have a visual to share with the commission as well as share with you all so that you can look at it and go, these are all the city positions, these are the, you know, the MPO positions that are dedicated to the different commission districts, this is the functions they'll perform, this is the liaison to the executive director, this is where I fit, you fit, everybody fits. And we all look at it and go, okay, that's really, we still have, we will still have a transportation department. And I think that's where this got off the rails early on is that people thought we were going to shut down the 290 building and hand everything over to the MPO and go, gosh, we're great to get out of business. Wasn't that fun? And that's, that's not the case. So I'm happy to, I see questions are coming in. I'm not going anywhere, but I'm going to let a couple of other folks, you know, present if they want, just their, their ideas as to what it is so that you just didn't hear from me directly. But I'm not going anywhere. We'll get to questions when it's, when it's time. Greg, you want to take it over?
Sure. Thanks, Chris. Yep. Trying not to be duplicative, but just as introduction, my name is Greg Stewart. I run the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization. And while Chris and I have had this conversation going on for the last year, we've actually been having this conversation that predates TAM. And a lot of the reasons why the TAM was created was I was sitting with a former mayor as well as a former city manager and said, you're about to get hit with about $275 million worth of federal projects to the city of Fort Lauderdale. And who's going to be managing this? And that was a really good question because over in sustainable development, it didn't used to be called that. They didn't even have enough planners over there. There was a particular planner that actually put all of these projects into our funding pot eight years earlier. And so like Chris, we're always out in the new sixth year, we're always adding the new sixth year. But when you're 10 years ahead, you can add a lot more money into the pot. And so one of our visionary planners who came back to this organization actually started putting all of these different projects into what we call our long-range transportation plan. And that created this very large pipeline of projects that were supposed to come to Fort Lauderdale. And when I say they were supposed to come to Fort Lauderdale, there is a reason for the happy face and the unhappy face, and I'll get to that in a second. But there's also another reason why we programmed that type of volume of projects for the city of Fort Lauderdale. A few years ago, 132,115 cars come to Fort Lauderdale in the morning and only 49,625 cars leave. Only 20,000 cars circulate within Fort Lauderdale. So that means people like myself, I work in Fort Lauderdale, I live in Fort Lauderdale. Now, I live here in your neighborhood. I used to live over where is, you know, my former neighbor in Coral Ridge Country Club. You know, it's just a matter of, there's only 20,000 cars in the, in the city. That's the people that are going to work in the morning, just locally staying there. So about 132,115 cars are coming into our, our communities. They're cutting through our neighborhood streets, they're doing things that, and now with Waze, it's even worse. They're doing things to Fort Lauderdale that are very unpleasant for all of us. And I am one of those people that live here. And so I experience it. It's one of the reasons I moved in an area where the streets were blocked off. That said, that said, the reality is that's one of the things that I would see as one of the biggest problems Fort Lauderdale has over a lot of our partner cities. And that is one of your number one question. It's like, what is it that makes us different? What is it that makes this, this agreement special? And so not only will we have a minimum of four staffers dedicated per commission district, we're also going to have a Vision Zero person, we're also going to have an FTA funding person. So that way, the bus system that we operate, I sit on the, I'm chairman of your TMA, you know, I want to make sure that funding comes to the community and is planned out and utilized. I'm going to go to the unhappy face and the smiley face. We'll start with a smiley face because it's all over this room. From 2015 through 2018, the MPO has funded $23,565,477 worth of mobility projects. Those are Vision Zero capital projects, not new street enhancements. It is literally what we've been doing because of crash issues here. All that data resides on our websites. You can sit and pull down all the traffic information you can even imagine exists for our community. In that same time period, $9,464,861 had to come back to the MPO because there were issues with Fort Lauderdale, unfortunately, the TAM folks, there weren't enough folks doing in areas where they needed to, to execute that funding. So in total, if you add those two numbers up, you started seeing the magnitude of what this city needs. One already receives and two needs to be organized to receive. And those are just on your Vision Zero-type projects. Not talking about your signalization because that, there's another $80 million worth of projects between the Florida Department of Transportation because Sunrise Boulevard, Oak Park Boulevard, Davie Boulevard, Broward Boulevard, 17. All of that is managed by the Department of Transportation and their traffic engineering. All of that is programmed. Chris has funded a position through Brookbank to actually have somebody out at the traffic control center to watch special events and make sure that this happens. This is one of the most important things a city can do to make sure our signalization program is working. And many people in this room have been on Sunrise Boulevard going westbound, but east of Sears Towns. How many, how many light signals does it take to get through that? That is huge issues for all of us. That's just the reality of our day. Now, this 140, you know, the 140,000 people that are coming in now on their single occupancy vehicles, they don't really care in the end. They're, they're going back to plantation and they're going up to Boca Raton, they're going down to Hollywood. So how do we manage to actually have these planners that are over at the MPO help the city staff implement projects? When I was a Coral Ridge resident, you know, they came in and the city transportation mobility team did a great workshop with my whole homeowners association and got everybody excited about sidewalks and new stop signs and all of that. And then three years went by and nothing happened. One of the worst things in my profession is when you're left with an expectation that isn't deliverable. Now, we have funded Davie Drive Project and it's actually in design this year, but it was the new fifth-year project when that was originally programmed. So it's in design this year, it still won't go into construction for another two years. I lived in Victoria Park when I left, but somebody came and offered an insane amount of money for my house in Coral Ridge Country Club. So I moved into one of my neighbor's development. I lived there for about a year and a half in Victoria Park and I built a place in Lake Ridge. In Lake Ridge, there's a mobility plan too. Plan is not funded. It's not in any of the funding. And my friend Christine has done an incredible job over at TAM, every year applying for 15th Street with traffic circle. And every year, it ranks high and we say, let's fund this thing. And then it goes over to the Department of Transportation and it has a problem. Now Einstein always said, this thing about insanity is doing the same thing over again and expecting a different result. But I'm going to try to help and our team members, whether they're Fort Lauderdale team members or MPO team members are going to try to help change those results. So that way, funding actually does show up. It's necessary. And that's the most important thing because we can't just keep going, well, we just want this and then change some of the data points and expect a different result. Doesn't change. Now, Chris and myself, we're lucky because we have capital programs, we go out to the sixth year. The new thing that's happened, which really now emphasizes why this partnership is so important to the city and our residents, is the sales tax. Because unlike the new sixth year or fifth year that we're always funding, this money is going to start rolling out in the spring of '20, then into '21, and '22, and '23. We're working with Broward County Government, they have provided us with funding for positions, and those positions are very clear, to input the stuff in the cities, the projects. Right now, the city of Fort Lauderdale has 100 projects submitted in the surtax. I don't know if all of them are going to get funded in one time period, because what we're working with the county is to build five-year planning agreements, so that way you know what needs to be funded. This is a critical time for us to be working together. And honestly, the other cities should be doing the same. And those positions, not only reporting back to the commissioners and back to the administrator and over to Ben and our communication, back and forth between the homeowners associations, they also need to be able to be organizing with Broward County Government, the state of Florida, Department of Transportation, as well as the city staff, to understand how these different things can get programmed and funded and built, and that they're not falling on top of each other. And it's not as catch-as-catch-can, because there was a time where the city of Fort Lauderdale, and this is back before there was a TAM, used to have a transportation plan. And that transportation plan hasn't been updated since TAM was created. That's one of my commitments to Chris. You have to have a plan. You have to figure out how all these neighborhood projects intermix and mix together to actually then tie into all the other projects that should be funded and planned and programmed. So that's one of the things that we'd like to be able to offer, and it was never a, hey, let's get rid of TAM. I was here, I've, I've been around long enough that there was no TAM at the time when I started. Marilyn remembers, we've worked together. So this is why we thought it was a good idea. Chris and I were like, hey, let's make something happen to make this, because when the sales tax did pass, surprisingly, none of us, I honestly, it took us all by surprise, I didn't think it was going to pass, not at the level of it. So now it's a matter of how do you get that 20% of a penny into our roadway network, into our sidewalk projects, and into the things that are important to the city of Fort Lauderdale, and make sure that our neighborhoods are protected while we're doing it. With that, Ben, do you want to?
Probably should go, but let's, we've probably, we've used half the time talking, let's go to questions.
Okay. So, does anybody have any questions that they want to submit in writing? Allison Foster has more cards, I have some here, and I'm going to go through them. But I want to start by, there were a couple things that were on here that I don't recall an answer to. So question six was, you said that this, you didn't think that this was going to speed up our processes, but the question was, will we get more done?
I think the answer to that is yes. I mean, yes. And I think, Greg, let's just show that there's opportunity to get more done, so.
Okay. The answer is for us too, is yes. Nothing worse for me on my federal money is to see it go away. I want to see it spent.
And then you talked about the neighborhoods who have the mobility master plans. You didn't like clearly answer it, so I just want to restate what I think you were saying. They will see better results, because what you're saying is, everything that has to be done in order for funding to be released will now be done appropriately, so the better results are that the funds will be released. Am I understanding what you both said correctly?
You're going to have access to technical, now how to develop capital for a management system.
Okay.
For transportation.
Okay.
The city does a good job.
So this is a question that was submitted by the audience. What is the projected year-one cost for services?
So our year-one cost for services, when you look at how we've restructured a little bit of our department and then paid for the partnership, is actually as a revenue, it's a cost savings at this point, to about $350,000 to the general fund.
Okay. And with regards to this approach, which I assume the person means an interlocal agreement, is there a demonstrated efficiency in entering this type of agreement?
Is demonstrated efficiency, I think, you know, I've partnered, I've been a part of interlocal agreements with other governments for the purposes of regionalization of other things, and there has been efficiency gain, yes.
How about with your instinct?
Our expectation is it would be efficient delivery of both federal, state, and even county surtax dollars. That's the whole idea for us, is to efficiently deliver this. I don't like unhappy faces where I return $1 million.
Okay. Where will areas like Vision Zero reside in structure moving forward, and how will bike and pedestrian safety continue to be prioritized by city staff?
So taking your question sort of in, taking the question in, backing into an answer, the priority of the safety of our roadways is very important and will always, and will continue to be important for bicycle and pedestrian safety. You know, Vision Zero is a concept, and that concept can be delivered from many different places. Greg talked about the fact that he's going to have some, some Vision Zero capacity countywide. We're looked today and said, does Vision Zero make sense in our continued transportation department? Might it make sense in our police department? There's places that, there's places that it could reside, but our commitment to Vision Zero, and it's more importantly, its concept of reducing pedestrian and bicycle fatalities on our roads will not go away.
Okay.
Can I take a stab at that?
Yes, please.
Just also, so I have a 37-member board, and they actually, it's all the cities and county commission, and they adopted a Vision Zero policy for all of our projects. So that then extrapolates out to the Florida Department of Transportation and all of their projects, because that's our project responsibility. So we anticipate that not only, as we build projects here in Fort Lauderdale, Vision Zero will be important, it is not necessarily words and signs, it's about construction and building projects that reduce crash propensity. It's about building projects that allow for the 2.8% of bike riders, because that's all it is essentially for Fort Lauderdale, to be safe when they're on their bike. It allows for the 5% of people that are using buses in Fort Lauderdale on transit to be able to be safe when they go. I have data online, which I'll direct you to, that actually tells you how many people died because they were on a bicycle, and they buy a car, how many people died in their car, how many people died just walking across the street. I have all that very specific in crash data for every location here in Fort Lauderdale.
Okay. This next question, I'm not sure it's specific to this agreement, but I'll ask it anyways. This person's not clear why any one neighborhood warrants a master plan. Aren't transportation needs across neighborhoods? I think they mean across cities. If it's for specific needs, like stop signs, sidewalks, isn't capitalizing the effort better?
So I'll take a stab at that. If I could do a mobility plan for every neighborhood in Fort Lauderdale at the same time, that would certainly be our desire. That didn't, you know, that's just not practical, and therefore, the neighborhood's based upon a set of criteria, so it was objective, were identified in order as to which ones should start, and which ones, and in what order they should go, and we've been picking those off. We typically then work with the neighborhood and say, this is what the plan says, help us identify which of these projects you would like to have done in your neighborhood. Sometimes we get it right, and sometimes we get it wrong. And recently, we just had a sidewalk that went in to connect some stuff in Tarpaulin River, I think it was, and it worked great. And before that, we put in some offset, offset chicane-looking things in Saddle Bend, and they were hated so much, we had to spend money to rip them out. And so everybody wanted them till they were in and said, gosh, that just didn't, that doesn't work. And so sometimes we get it right, sometimes we get it wrong, but the reason that we don't have one for everyone is it just, we haven't gotten to it yet, but we've gotten to the ones that prioritize themselves high.
Okay. So then, as this agreement goes forwards, will projects in our city be prioritized due to areas that have the most needs and greater number of traffic?
We always try to prioritize the projects to solve the, you know, to solve based upon those factors. So the answer there is yes, yes. If I had all the money in the world, would I attack 17th Street right now to try to get people moving on it? Absolutely.
Or Los Olas.
Or Los Olas, or, you know.
Or Sunrise.
Yeah, it's, it's just, or 15th Avenue, or 13th Street, or today, trying to get here, 6th Street and Victoria Park, because it seemed like we had that whole neighborhood torn up, and I couldn't get to work, so. But yeah, we would love to do projects based upon, probably based upon the number of people that they affect.
Okay. So if going forward, individual neighborhoods need a plan for their neighborhood, does the MPO have experience doing neighborhood-level plans?
No, we're going to still do.
You're still going to do that?
Correct.
And we actually do.
And you do have experience, but the city will still be doing it.
We will continue to do this.
Okay. So going forward, if a neighborhood leader has to contact somebody about sidewalks, stop signs, speed bumps, where do they go and who does it?
Contact would be to the city.
And then?
If we need to engage the, if it's a project that, it would be an MPO-type planning, then will be the interacting point between them. And when we get visual, you'll see that. There's a city staff member that is the point of contact to the MPO. It's not the contact directly with the MPO staff member. So in any circumstance, you're going to be calling somebody who works for the city of Fort Lauderdale. We will decide if we continue to handle it, or if we engage on the person's behalf, those contacts at the MPO.
Okay. Since we still have time, and I still have questions in my hand, I apologize for the rapid fire, but I'm going to keep going, because I think there'll still be time for everybody to finish, and then we'll wrap up. The term "regional player" was used. How does this make us a regional player, and what do you even mean by that?
Some bad jokes. I guess I was the one that said it, so I'll be the one that explains it. So I, you know, we're, I think it's important that when you're a part of a county that has 31 municipalities in it, managed counties that have 14 municipalities in it, it is much trickier when there's twice that many, or 31, that we need to be, we need to, as the biggest city with the largest population, admittedly the county seat, we need to be the first one at the table with the county organization to show everybody else how this, how this can, can work. And so if I use the word "regional player," that's what I meant by it.
Okay.
Can I build on that?
Yes, sure.
Just real quick. Goes back to the number of trips that are coming into Fort Lauderdale, and this is, that aren't people that live here, and that is, you are, you are already a regional player, and you just need to kind of step up there.
Okay. Somebody gave you this comment, it's not a question. Since we're the largest city in the county anyways, this relationship should already be standing operating procedure.
I agree.
So I guess the question is, why is it not?
We just have never gotten it this far. Greg and I have been working on it for years, and this year, you know.
It's on.
Okay.
Very candidly, this year was my budget, and I got to bring what I thought was right for Fort Lauderdale in my, in my budget.
Okay. Is the city relinquishing control and effectiveness in contracting out essential levels of support to city residents?
Say that one more time? Thank you.
Is the city relinquishing control and effectiveness by contracting out work?
No. No, it's not.
How are you maintaining control?
We maintain, because we are maintaining being the implementer, so none of that's changing, that, you know, if we're the ones that are implementing a project today, we will be implementing a project with this relationship too.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't change.
So what if this relationship falls flat and stinks?
Then we've got to go right back to the status quo.
So then you just have to, you'll have to rebuild what you've taken out?
There's only four positions that.
Yeah, yeah. Correct. We would, we would rebuild to, probably a different version of what we were, but we would rebuild to having a transportation department that didn't have a partnership with the regional MPO.
Commissioner Moritas, at last night's budget advisory meeting, brought up an option similar to what is done between the city and the school board, a dedicated staff member. Why is that not an option here?
It sort of is. You know, Zoe Saunders is our education officer. I told her in the parking lot last night, I said, you were used as an adjective in the meeting, is that true? And they said, just hire a Zoe for transportation. When you see the organizational chart as we depict this going forward, you will see that it does include a Zoe for transportation.
We have requested traffic analysis for road elimination projects specifically for impact on residential side streets, and it was never received. Can you describe MPO's ability to conduct traffic analysis?
All right, that's actually easy. I push-button contract with traffic count folks, so it's just a matter of saying, I need this information, and I need this now. And in one particular case, I, in Fort Lauderdale here, I was at a meeting with Chris and, at that time Vice Mayor Swanson, and the folks in Riverland wanted to have some traffic counts for some traffic calming devices temporarily until we came in with a capital program, which starts next year. And the, and this is where the county gets involved, Broward County Government said, well, don't do the traffic counts until the schools come back. And that was very logical. So that traffic count is now going to proceed, but it's just, there are some technical reasons why you wait to do a traffic analysis, you just don't do it that day, because there are certain things that you need to take into account, and schools are a really big player in traffic, especially parents picking up and dropping off.
So this is my last card, and then I have some left from an email, so I'll, oh. How will city continue to provide hands-on services and relationships with residents, neighborhoods, without creating another communication process or layer in addressing issues and concern? I know that you tried to answer it, but why don't you reinforce what you said?
So I answered that the same way by saying that your contact is still going to be to your transportation department that is a city staff member in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And to the extent we need to leverage the relationship with the MPO to our benefit, or to their benefit because of the talents that they have in their shop, it'll be our staff member that picks up the phone and coordinates that contact.
Okay. Will this affect Complete Streets project and Tiger grant funding for Riverland Road?
So no to number two. I have my own opinion on Complete Streets projects, some of them, but, and whether or not they are counterproductive or not, but the answer to that is no two.
Okay. Will the MPO have to keep work they do for the city of Fort Lauderdale separate from work they're doing for other cities in the county?
Absolutely. That's a, that's a requirement I make of all of my team. I get funding sources from multiple areas, Washington, from three areas in Washington, from the state of Florida, from Broward County Government, and we actually, we kind of operate more like a consulting firm, so it's billable-based, and everybody is actually coming back with, this is how many hours I worked on this project, this was the deliverable that came out. And so we actually do that once a month where we have reporting, and I'm planning on supplying that over to Ben and Chris every month, and this is what we're doing, and this is what we did, and, you know, these are the other services that we're tapping into.
Okay. I have one question, that somebody explained something to me, I kept hearing about conflict of interest, and that people were worried about it. And then I spoke with someone, and that person explained it to me, and I want to run it by you, so you can tell me if I'm understanding this process. One of the big reasons why we don't have to worry about conflict of interest in this situation is because of all the representatives that you have sitting on, I'll call it, your board. So it's not just the Fort Lauderdale guys kind of shaking hands and getting it done. And in addition to the fact that the board is providing oversight, you also have to make sure you're meeting requirements for the government agencies that you're providing, you're getting the funding fund. So the federal government will be looking at what you're doing, the state will be looking at you're doing, everybody's looking at what you're doing, so therefore, the conflict of ish, the conflict issue really doesn't exist because everybody's looking at you? Is that correct?
I'm probably the most audited organization, no demand, because of all the different folks that are paying attention to it. But the most important thing to really recognize is city of Fort Lauderdale programs and requests are city of Fort Lauderdale's, and that will go to the city administrator, it will go to city staff, it will go to the city commission. And then a regional conversation may happen between the mayor and Commissioner McKenzie, who's said on the board.
Right.
When it comes to federal and state funding. When it comes to county surtax funding, it will actually happen over the county commission. So my board doesn't necessarily, so that's why I tell you I'm so audited, yeah, it's very hard to have any type of conflict.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have 10 minutes left, so I think we'll do five minutes of questions and comments from anybody out here, and then we'll do five minutes closing. How does that sound? Can you please state your name?
My name is Alfred Gilan, representing Rock Island Development Corporation. Now, you said these projects will be prioritized, and I've noticed the city priorities the last couple of years. When is some of that priority coming to the northwest sector?
Some of the priorities is initially, are you talking about mobility plans?
Yes, yes, it's just about streets, right?
It is, it is. And so there have been neighborhoods in the northwest that were part of the first wave of priority, that, and Dorsey River Bend is one that has a mobility plan.
So north and west. City of Fort Lauderdale has that 31st and 19th Street.
You're absolutely right.
And we give absolutely nothing there.
So we'll look at the, the next list of priorities, and objectively done, so that nobody's sitting in a closet saying, you know, I want to do this one over that one, but we'll, we'll, we'll look and see how it, how it stands up against other neighborhoods objectively, and we can try our best to put them in order. But we need to invest as much in the northwest as we do anywhere else in the city.
Can I?
Completely agree.
Chris, I agree. So I have a project that is a priority to start construction on 31st that goes all the way up in Prospect, and we've been working on that with the county, with the city, with Oakland Park, with Lauderdale Lakes, and that actually is ready to go. And if I can, I'll get your name and number of meetings over with, and I'll get my team talking to you about it, because I'm surprised you're unaware of it. It's a $7 million project.
Okay. Marilyn, you mentioned the, give me a second.
One second.
Marilyn, and then the gentleman.
You mentioned that the city has an old transportation master plan.
Used to, yeah.
And the comp plan mentions the transportation master plan quite a lot. I'm assuming that. I'm assuming that we're talking about updating that transportation master plan?
One of the first things that Greg is committed to do.
Okay. You're going to do it?
We're going to do a plan. We're going to take it off the shelf. We're going to figure out how the other plans fit together into, we're going to give it over to the city, we're going to meet with the city commission. We'll be meeting with all the homeowners associations. That used to be a function of planning and zoning years ago. And so, it's just a matter of bringing that back alive.
Okay.
First on the list.
Over here.
You mentioned about the name Charlie Lightstop, Riverland Preservation. You said something about the Complete Streets program being counterproductive. Many of us in the community believe that this particular one, some of it, is counterproductive to the safety of the residents and pedestrians in the community. What can be done to alter that plan at this stage of time?
We're talking Tiger Grant.
We're talking Tiger Grant. And also, traffic calling vehicles for Riverland Road, which is turning to...
We'll let Greg answer on Tiger Grant. That project is part of a multi-city, multi-project plan. And so, I mean, you know, when I say I don't know that there's much that can be done with that plan, I don't know that there is.
And I, I mean, when we met with you all, it was very upfront and front.
Right.
Riverbanks and Riverbanks. But, you know, the bigger picture is, is where do we go from here? And that's actually more the thing. One of the things that I realized when I was out there and watching that, and it was just me and one other staffer and a whole bunch of folks in the town.
Two hundred people.
Yeah. But it was good. So then that's, those are the conversations that we want to be engaging with, and this is why this partnership is so important. Because I was under the, my team and I were under the misrepresentation that there was 100% community support.
Okay. So Barbara Colleen Vendettis.
Barbara McGill, Fort Lauderdale Harbers. I bet you made me a little nervous when you said, "Oh, there were some projects that had, when you had to go back." I'm concerned about Cordova Road.
Cordova's funded.
It's funded.
Yeah, so that's moving forward.
Okay. Okay, Colleen.
So you kind of touched on this, and I don't know if we can do this without visuals, but you've got a current TAM department, and you've got MPO. Can we talk a little bit just about the org? I mean, I see an org chart, right? You got, and you've got four people in MPO per each district, plus a Vision Zero person.
Plus a Complete Streets person.
Plus a Complete Streets person. And then the rest of MPO consists of, how does, how do you...
We have 32 current employees in the system. We are going to be at 41 by the end, my budget year starts July 1. So I have to get my budget to my board earlier, so July 1 was my new board date. So it basically, we have a whole program that we're laying out. We're hiring county sales tax positions. We've filled two so far. I have one from Colorado. She came in, we offered her the job, she accepted. Two days later, she called. I got a better offer in Denver. So, you know, it's been a little bit, it's hard to find people. I'm going to be honest, losing one of the employees here was hard because it's really hard to find qualified staff. I'm going to obviously try to encourage some of the city staff to join our organization to provide the MPO function that we've given to the city.
It sounds like more than 50% of your staff is going to be focused on the City of Fort Lauderdale.
You will have access, and this is the thing that I, that we like about this, and this is where the other cities are going to ultimately go if this works, is you have access to our knowledge base, not just here regionally, not just at the state level, not just at the regional level, not just at the national level. It's just, you have all of this information that we have access to. What's happening in Los Angeles, what's happening in Peoria. I immediately have conversations with folks, and that will benefit our relationship. Because I'll be able to say, "Hey, this is what's happening." You have a Vision Zero planner here, her name is Lizette. And it was really actually kind of funny, because I was on a phone call a couple, about a year ago. And they had contacted me at my national, because I also sit on the national board of NPOs. And they said, "Hey, who would we invite?" And I'm like, "You know, the City of Fort Lauderdale has this Vision Zero planner. I'd like to have her included in it." And so, she's on this national phone call and she's talking. And she goes, "Yeah, we don't have anything in our area, but there's this thing called the Palm Beach TPA," which is my sister agency in Palm Beach. And I was kind of like, "Really?" So there's a lot of, there's more, we need to be working more together, and this is what's going to drive it.
Okay. Dennis Ulmer?
Do you foresee that the other partners could be jealous of this partnership, and that could influence their vote on our project?
So is your question related to Greg's other board members? They could be jealous that we figured this out and are trying it before they get a chance to? I don't know how your board might react. I guess that's always a possibility. I can tell, after multiple conversations with our commission, that I believe there's a support here to pursue and to continue, or I wouldn't be standing here in front of you saying that I think that this is good for Fort Lauderdale.
Yeah, and I mean, that's always the fear factor that you have. But our board won't be voting on city projects per se, but they will be going for, you know, grant monies. But that's also, we don't actually do it on a political basis, and I know that kind of sounds strange. Our board votes, but we run things through a technical analysis and then present them a list. And then they, in the 11 years I've been doing this, that list has only been changed twice.
Okay. We're going to have one more question, and then we're going to wrap it up. But before we leave, we'll make sure that we know where the rest of the questions need to be directed to. Marilyn, last question.